Okay, I'm going to call the order of the March 15, 2022, 2022 meeting. First thing that I'm going to do is introduce the planning board members. Starting over at my left is Doug Breskin, and he was newly elected. Peter Goodwin, sitting next to Doug. And then Mike Carter, who is the vice chairman. John Thurston to my right, followed by Brad Harriman and Julie Jacobs, who is an alternate. And Von Dugan just came in. So, the first item on the agenda, there are three public hearings. And the first one is the Town of Wolfboro Planning Board. This is a site plan regulation amendment. And actually, what it's doing is eliminating the newspaper notice requirement. Tavis, would you like to go through the reason for this?
Only because it was, wow, we're allowed tonight. Only because there were a number of phone calls today asking why the planning board was going to stop putting notices in the paper. I think what I understood to be the case is the planning board will continue to have notices put in the paper as a standard practice. What this amendment does is removes the obligation for a public notice to be posted in a newspaper of general circulation in town to satisfy the state noticing requirements for a public hearing. So, those that have misunderstood, I apologize. This is really the only, the first time to be able to explain this. Everything that the planning board does with regard to noticing is going to continue as it has, so visibly, there will be no change in process.
Okay, and what is the requirement in the state statute?
Needs to be posted in two public places.
Okay, and what we're doing, we post it anyway in two public places, plus the newspaper.
Correct. Actually, right now, we post it in two public places, the website and the newspaper. But the state removed the newspaper requirement for a site plan review two or three years ago.
Okay, okay, so this is a public hearing on this?
If I'm not mistaken, what it says in the regulation is that you can remove the newspaper requirement if it is published on the town website.
Correct.
You have to have one or the other. You can't remove both.
Right. Okay, so I'll open the public hearing on this item. Any member of the public wants to speak to it? Come on up, Suzanne.
(noise)
Yeah, that doesn't seem to be working.
It works now. Forgot to touch.
I'm here to speak opposed to taking it out of the newspaper, the ad out of the newspaper. I guess I'd like to know why the board's considering doing that.
Well, if, we spoke about this when you approached the board the last time we had a discussion on this issue, and we listened to you and we agreed, we're not taking, we're not, we're not any longer going to put ads in, let me rephrase that. We are not, we are not, we will continue putting notices in the newspaper. We're just not required to by state law, and we're bringing our own rules of procedure up to be in accordance with state requirements.
So, you're still going to advertise in the paper?
Yes.
Yes.
You're just, you're just letting your regulation know that you don't have to, so if you miss the ad, you're covered?
Or if there's a problem with the newspaper for some reason in the future, we will be able to take into account that through our rules of procedure.
Because it is a good service, I know that, believe it or not, people, I mean, I hate buying the newspaper because there's nothing in it, but people do communicate that way. Not everyone does by electronics, as Tavis knows, huh? But the webpage or the web town website is lacking terribly, and sometimes things make it into the community notice, and sometimes they don't. So, thank you for not eliminating the newspaper ad. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Roger Murray, I'd like to speak in opposition to this. I think your proposal really makes it the worst of two worlds, because by removing it, people, and saying we're going to put it in, people will rely on it, but you don't have to do it. So, people can't necessarily rely on it. And I think one of the things planning boards struggle with is the fact that people keep saying they don't know what the planning board's doing. You get to zoning amendments, there's a recent chamber meeting where they say, "We have no idea what this is about." And if these notices go out, that's at least one way of at least trying to communicate with people. You know, you hold hearings, nobody shows up. You hold information meetings, people don't show up. The only time they show up is when they want to complain about something. And I think this is a way to make sure it's in the paper. I know it has to be on the website, but, for example, the agenda of today's, tonight's hearing appeared at 3:00 something yesterday afternoon. I've tried to sign up for the email alert, I haven't gotten anything so far. My wife, who signed up, says she gets stuff periodically. I talked to somebody who was getting stuff from Tuftonboro, and I think this is important. It's a way for people to know what's going on, and it does obligate you to do it. I mean, at some point, the boards say, "Well, you know, we're tired of this, we'll stop doing it." And there's nothing that says you couldn't do that. So, I think this should be left in. I don't think there's a good reason for removing it, and if there's an expenditure expense, that should be borne by applicants.
Okay, all right, thank you for your comments. Any other member of the public want to speak to this particular issue? Okay, okay.
Abigail Adams from Pleasant Street in Wolfboro. And I just want to be clear, so if you guys didn't feel like you needed to put it in, or a future planning board didn't feel like they had to put something in the newspaper, then you wouldn't have to do it?
I think that's the case.
I think it would, it would come down to something more than just, "We didn't feel like doing it."
(laugh) But in a worst-case scenario, you guys would never do this, but I'm saying in the future, different planning board, what would hold their feet to the fire to have to put it in?
There's nothing to hold their feet to the fire if we decide to change our rules of procedure. The state acknowledges that putting ads into the newspaper has become onerous, and there are other ways of reaching the public, many of whom rely on those different ways in the newspaper. So, we're simply going along with the times. This board is not whimsical, and it doesn't change its mind based upon how it feels. If we were to decide, I can't speak for future boards, but I can speak for this one pretty more, pretty certain, if we decided that we were not going to put an ad in the newspaper anymore with an agenda, or what we were going to be doing, or in a notice of public hearing or whatever, we would have a discussion on that, and it would be a public discussion, and the public would be invited, and they'd hear our reasons. And if the reasons weren't good, we would probably not do it. It's not whimsical at all.
No, I don't, I know it's not whimsical. I think it's a cost-saving measure, and it's a sign of the times, but at this point, for people over 70, the paper is often where they get their information.
And we acknowledge that by continuing, sorry.
So, that's all.
No, I was just saying, let you speak.
No, just that's why I was concerned.
I've changed my mind. I would request that you don't take it out of your regulations. Just because you can doesn't mean you should. It's a good, it's a good scapegoat to say, "Well, we didn't get it in the paper." And nobody bears any responsibility for that. So, I think it's a pass-through item. You get the fee for it when you advertise. It doesn't cost the town money. I think it's, it's just a backdoor way out for administration to get out of it. So, I would like you to leave it in.
Okay, thank you. Any other member of the public want to speak to this? Okay, actually, I agree with the statements that have been said. I think that this is an opportunity to let the public know what the planning board is reviewing and doing. And during the election, I had several conversations with people about how we operate, and I think this is a very important part of how we operate and being part of a public agency. And I really don't see why we would take it, take it out. I think we can do something beyond what the state requires of us, and I just think it's sending the wrong message. Anybody else want to comment?
Yes, thank you. I agree with what the folks out here have said also, and with you, Kathy. I've always spoken with the chairman of the Board of Selectmen and also the town manager, and they're definitely opposed to removing this, as I am too. We've got to keep in mind, there's a lot of us baby boomers out there still that are not really up on the technical world and stuff as much as the younger generations and stuff, so we do like to see it in the newspaper, and, you know, hopefully, we're all going to be around for a while longer anyway, so. So, I think this does two things for us by keeping it in here. It provides consistency for the board, is a requirement. That way, the public would know that any hearings that do come up will be in the paper. It wouldn't be, you know, a missed one here or there, it would still continue without that hearing notice being put out there. And I agree, you know, we've, we've talked about this, and we want to continue putting it in anyway, but it, there's no reason that the town can't be a little more strict than the state is. Even just because the state's allowing us to remove it doesn't mean we have to remove it. So, I'm in favor of leaving it in as it is now and not, not changing it, so, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else want to make a comment?
Move the issue.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Be happy to move that we rescind this proposed motion, and that we retain the original wording as found in our rules of procedure, and that we will continue, as a matter of rule, to insert notices into the newspaper of general circulation in the town.
Speaking to the rules of procedure or to the site plan regulation 173-10?
Yeah, this is the site plan.
Beg pardon, thank you. 173-10, strike rules of procedure.
Somebody want to second that motion? I'll second it. Okay, motion has been made and seconded. All in favor of rescinding this proposal and continue to keep the words "and" in a newspaper of general circulation in the town in our site plan regulations. So, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, all right.
Democracy in motion.
Yeah. Okay, the next item on the agenda, the Town of Wolfboro Planning Board. This is a site plan regulation amendment. Can we do, Tavis, can we do both of these at the same public hearing and then vote on them separately?
Absolutely. It could even be approved in the same motion.
Okay, so, the first one is the site plan regulation amendment amending 170, oh, sorry, amending to delete 173-21 stormwater drainage and replace it with 173-21 stormwater regulations. And then the second part would be the Town of Wolfboro Planning Board's site plan regulation to amend 174, which is the subdivision regulations, 9G, to read stormwater drainage would read 174-9G stormwater regulations, C 173-21. So, actually, what we're doing is taking a look at our stormwater regulations. We're actually going to void the regulations that are in place and that were adopted in And then the proposal is to amend the site plan regulations, 173-21, and subdivision regulation, 174-9G. This will require an applicant for commercial and multifamily development, as well as new subdivision, to show the planning board how stormwater will be managed. These actual regulations will be amended, clarified, and made more enforceable. The regulations have been reviewed and discussed by the stormwater committee. This committee started with the planner and three planning board members, John Thurston, Brad Harriman, and myself. It was then expanded and included the Wentworth Watershed Director Julie Brown, Rich Massey, and Abigail Adams from Wolfboro Waters, Roger Murray, and Conservation Chairman Lenore Clark. I'm also a member of the Wolfboro Waters Committee. The draft regulations have also had input from several professionals in the field. The committee used a model ordinance from 2012 and the Southeast Watershed Alliance Model Stormwater Standards from 2017, I think. The regulations to be discussed will require the deletion of the site plan regulations by deleting all of 173-24 and amending it with the new stormwater regulations and deleting, as I said before, 174G, which is the subdivision regulations, and replacing it to read C Stormwater Regulations in 173-21. These regulations are also referred to in the 2019 master plan, which talks about preparing and enhancing the stormwater regulations. I did receive a couple letters. Lenore's here, so you want to speak to yours when, when we, yeah, okay. And then I also had a letter from Sarah Silt, and I copied the planning board members on, on all of these. So, let me just turn this over to Tavis, and Tavis, do you want to go through what we're going to be looking at in a little more detail?
Not, not, not really, because...
And also, you were going to speak to, about the two emails that I sent to you.
Yep. Basically, what this does is require any project that disturbs more than 10,000 square feet to go through a stormwater management plan. The planning board also has the ability to, or is reserving the right to look at smaller areas of disturbance and require the same level of stormwater management plan. To oversimplify what these regulations do is it requires every applicant to put together a stormwater management plan, conditions before the project, and then conditions when the project is complete, and there's a whole series of standards of water quality improvements that they have to make the stormwater. Procedurally, what will happen is every site plan review or subdivision application that comes in will have to include a submission under the stormwater regulations. That will then be sent out to the town's third-party review engineer at the applicant's expense. That engineer will determine whether the plans comport with the regulations or not, and then that engineer will make a recommendation back to the planning board. The idea in that is not to have one engineer questioning another engineer in terms of this pipe versus that pipe, or this filter versus that filter, but does it comport with the regulations? Also, with these regulations comes a requirement for the establishment of an operations and maintenance plan that is also part of the stormwater management plan that is essentially requiring the property owner, you know, through time, to comply with the stormwater management plan until it's modified, basically. It talks about annual inspections. Annual inspections will be detailed in the operation and maintenance report. If there's a large housing project, it might be the onsite housing manager that manages and monitors the stormwater management plan. If it's a commercial project, they could be able to pick an engineer to do that themselves. All of that expense is on the applicant, and this doesn't cost the town any more money. At the same time, it enables the planning board to not try and understand sand filters and rain gardens, and how much water's going where, and which page do I have to look at to understand how this works. Engineers are doing the math and figuring out how the whole system works. And that's about as simple as I can make it. The email questions centered largely on who's responsible, who's doing the enforcing, and the answer to that is, the town is generally enforcing it, insofar as it's a planning board approval that leads to these being implemented. But they also have to come with their own inspection protocol that's part of the stormwater management plan. So, the applicant is also enforcing it with town oversight from the day of install through completion.
Right, and we're requiring the applicant to submit something to us every September 1st, which will then be reviewed by the planning board.
Correct.
So, are you all set? Okay, I just, I just had one question. I mean, this, the regulation that I asked you to, to put in about the 10,000 square feet, I think it needs to say less than 10,000 square feet, rather than just the...
It does.
Well, I know, but I would like it to say less than.
She wants that symbol spelled out as less.
Oh, so you want the care replaced with the words "less than"?
Yeah, right.
In that same paragraph, just the line above, the words "compliance with these regulations" for, I think, should be struck, stricken.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing on, on this item. If anybody, members of the public want to speak to it, now is the time to do that.
Good evening. I'm Lenore Clark. I'm a resident of Wolfboro and the chair of the Wolfboro Conservation Commission, who had a little, a small amount of participation in this subcommittee, so I just wanted to, first of all, offer a sincere thank you on behalf of the Conservation Commission to all of the, those of you who really did the bulk of the work, because we really appreciate it. The commission sees this as a very important step, and we think this is a good product. I had a couple of sort of detail-level questions, which I sent to the chair, concerning more about the equations that were at the end. We just want to make sure that this is a user-friendly document that a layperson can understand, and that involved adding units to some of the equa, some of the parts of the equations. But other than that, really, we think this is very important work. It helps to protect our surface waters, which I don't need to tell you folks are of the utmost importance in this town, so we appreciate everything you folks have been doing, and we're in support.
Okay, Tavis, do you want to comment on what Lenore had said?
Yeah, I don't know if you'll like the answer. A layperson isn't going to understand the units, but at the same time, a layperson can't submit an application to the planning board. So, everything that's submitted to the planning board has to be prepared by a surveyor and/or an engineer, and for the two engineers that are in the room, it's a well-known formula. So...
That's, that's all, that's the most important part.
Yes.
As long as they understand it. And I also really appreciated what you said about the inspections being due on an annual basis, and the enforcement and maintenance being very important.
And that's every year after, for any applicant.
Absolutely, absolutely, so, thank you all very much.
Okay, all right.
Hi, good evening. It's nice to see everybody's faces with no masks, it's been a long time. Julie Brown, I'm a resident of Wolfboro and the director of the Wentworth Watershed Association, and I just wanted to read a brief statement. So, the Wentworth Watershed Association would like to express its gratitude to the planning board for inviting us and other stakeholders to be part of the Stormwater Regulation Subcommittee Working Group. The WWA supports the acceptance of the new proposed stormwater regulations. We believe that they are, as presented in entirety, usable regulations for developers and engineers, and that they will be easier for the planning board to review and enforce. We all know, as Lenore just said, that the threat of stormwater runoff poses to the health of surface waters in Wolfboro. These regulations will help address commercial development and redevelopment issues for runoff. So, thank you so much for protecting the waters, and thank you for including us. It was a very interesting and productive event to create these, so thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Randy Tetro, resident, former member of the Conservation Commission, so I certainly understand the need and the rationale for the requirements. I guess my question would be more on the applicability side of it in general. I read through it, and the 10,000 square feet of disturbance is one thing. One of the questions I have, and maybe I misinterpreted it, was on the subdivision aspects, is this is standalone ordinance, right, that's applicable to the site review regulations and the subdivision regulations. And the reason it's in them is because you guys can look at each one, the specific details, and be able to waive something, and it won't be a variance situation, which is the proper place for it. My question would be, for instance, you had a four-lot road front subdivision, and so there's no impacts being proposed, per se, as far as new road to be built, or stormwater management ponds, or whatever. Is there going to be any requirement for that type of thing, for, you know, post-construction plans or so forth? You see what I'm asking?
Yes, I can see what you... You want to comment on that, Tavis?
I think it's going to end up being site-specific. If you're dealing with four small lots, and it's, it doesn't matter what size the lots are. I think the planning board would want to have the ability to say that it might be conditions on the lots that they have gutters that are hard, hard-lined into infiltration systems.
As far as notes to generalities.
Correct, notes to generalities, right.
Because you won't know what's going to necessarily happen.
Correct, not, not specific to size of the house, or if the house is larger than this, an X, Y, and Z are required, but that the site is to be designed in a manner that encourages infiltration. But I think that the regulation is specifically geared to the larger subdivision that may have a roadway, private, public, what have you, on how that discharge gets addressed.
Yeah, and that's what a couple of the members that were on the committee told me. It's just that, in some instances, it's one thing if they're in a shorefront zone or something like that, but if they're not, and, and they're single-family residential lots, and you don't know exactly how they're going to be built, or that, if, so I would, I would guess you guys would have kind of a list of those type of things that you'd want to see as standard notes on a subdivision application, per se.
Yeah, that's why they're in site plan regulation.
Yeah, or site, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, all right, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I got something relative to that. So, is it a simple subdivision if you're just cutting on road frontage? So, say, somebody has the land, and they can just do a simple subdivision with road frontage and, and make two lots, and then later on, they could continue on and make two more lots, they wouldn't be, it wouldn't be an official subdivision at that point, would it?
Well, anytime you turn one lot into two, it's an official subdivision. But it would give the planning board the opportunity at every intersection or every project to say, "Is there a wetland on this property? Are there sensitive lands on this property? Should we require that infiltration be directed to this side versus that side?" So, it's going to be very site-specific on what level of detail the planning board goes into.
Yeah, I, I think it's basically, if you don't know how the lot's going to be developed yet, if there's standard procedures you'd like to see as part of the subdivision approval or a lot line adjustment even, you know, that, that you're not proposing any specific, you know, development at that time, it's just a residential home. It's just a residential home. I did notice in there that it said any resurfacing and so forth of areas, of gravel areas, resurfacing and stuff like that. Does that mean any lot in town that's doing something like that is subject to that? That wouldn't get a building permit for, necessarily?
It would get reviewed if it triggered site plan review.
Okay.
So not necessarily every gravel lot becoming asphalt equals site plan review.
Something that was to trigger an application.
Correct. You have to trigger site plan or subdivision for this to trigger.
Yeah.
And then we have the option to decide if we need something, a stormwater drainage or not.
Right. But it would be under a subdivision application or a site review application?
Correct.
Right.
Not a building permit, per se?
No.
No.
Okay.
That wouldn't come in.
This is not going to hit single-family properties.
Okay, so when someone goes for a building permit with a septic design, that's not when that hits? Or someone goes to shore land permit, does it hit?
No.
All right. Sorry for the confusion.
No, no, it's okay.
All of your questions make perfect sense to those that get the applications.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public want to comment? Okay, then I'll close the public hearing. Planning board members?
I have a couple of concerns regarding Sarah Silk's memo to the planning board chair and circulated to all of us. There are a number of typos that she found. I verified them. Are they definitely going to be fixed?
The one space versus... I showed, actually, we were showing Kathy this yesterday. All of those are actually two words. What happens when you come in and out of PDF to edit documents? PDF plays with it. So the spacing is correct.
So they're done? All right.
Yes. There are a couple of other... There should be a closed parenthesis at the end of this phrase, or a couple of little things that I've noticed now, being the 5,000th time I've read this, there are little grammatic things that need to be touched up.
Okay, but those will be taken care of.
Yes.
Then the concern that both Sarah and Lenore raised in the chart, water quality, volume, I being defined but not appearing in the formula, has that been fixed, or will it be fixed? I'm going to defer to their expertise, because I don't really know what it means, but...
There was a follow-up email that Sarah had been confused on that part, and I figured out afterwards that I actually does appear in the next equation down. It's sort of a...
Correct. So that's done.
There was...
Okay, I never got the follow-up memo, which is the reason why I raised the issue. And the only other one, Sarah mentions on page nine, paragraph I, number seven, she asks, quote, "Should it be specified that any cost to town for repairs be a charge leaned to the property owner?"
I don't have page numbers, hold on.
I'm sorry. It's paragraph I, number seven. Just above the definition section.
Spell your team's right. No, no, actually, what number seven means is that the recommendation would likely come from the planning board if someone was proposing an entire maintenance system, if you will, on the property, that there be a town access easement, so the town has the ability to go in and maintain it, should it threaten town infrastructure or public safety, something to that effect. In those instances, that is always charged back to the property owner.
That's understood?
Yes.
Okay, then that's moved. All right, thank you.
And it would be so noted in the O and M manual for every one of these plans.
Okay. Thank you, Minister.
All right, anyone else? Okay, then entertain a motion on the site plan regulations.
Happy to move that the board adopt the Stormwater Regulations 173-21 as presented this evening.
Second it.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded for the site plan regulations. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and then the next one would be in the subdivision regulations.
Be happy to move that we amend 174-9G Stormwater Drainage to read 174-9G Stormwater Regulations, colon, C173-21.
Okay, and that just basically, it's just so that we don't have to copy it into the subdivision regulation. Okay, saving paper, good. Okay, motion has been made.
I'll second that.
And seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, all right. Thank you very much, folks, for coming. Carry on. Okay, let's see. Okay, we're now into the discussion items, and the first issue is a conceptual, non-binding project review. This is a preliminary conceptual review for the planning board to meet with an applicant to just informally discuss issues that probably may need to be addressed once we understand the project a little bit more. And it's for the Pine Hill community, Route 109A, and that's one lot is tax map 175-11. That's in the Pine Hill Development District. And the proposal is for two 45-unit apartment buildings. And then for tax map 161-15 and 161-16, this is a proposal for 90 manufactured housing apartments. So, are you...
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Randy Walker. I work for Walker &amp; Varney here in Wolfboro. I'm representing Jordy Hutchinson and Michelle Hansen, who are the applicants. For those of you that don't know Jordy and Michelle, this is Michelle who's handing out a little bit of paperwork for you. Both of them are locals to Wolfboro, were born at Huggins Hospital, both graduated from Kingswood High School. Michelle's got three kids in the school system here. And my point is simply that they have a vested interest in Wolfboro. They've decided to make this their long-term home, and would like this project to go forward, which they believe Wolfboro has a need for. The concept tonight is pretty simple from our perspective. We'd like your input and feedback. And if that feedback is positive, we will go forward, and if it is not, we will not go forward. This project is not insignificant, and if the board does not feel that it's viable, again, this may be the last time you see us, we are hopeful that that will not, however, be the case. This property is located on Route 109A. It's behind Winnebaski Lumber, behind the SAU building, behind Wickers, and behind GI Plastique. It completely wraps around all of those properties. It's a 92-acre piece of property presently comprised of three surveyed lots. One lot, which is in the Pine Hill Development District, has 47 acres. The second lot is in the residential zone that has 21 acres, and the third lot has 24 acres. And those delineations are not shown on the plan that you have, but the green area is the full 92 acres. But there's three properties that comprise that 92 acres, and the proposal is, at the end of the day, there will still be three lots. So they're not trying to subdivide these at all. They may do some internal boundary line adjustments, but there's three lots currently, and at the end, there would be three lots. And the concept is, is to build on one of the lots, a building that would have 45 units. On the second lot, a second building, Building 2, which would also have 45 units, for a total of 90 units, you can see those on your plan. And then in the residential zone, the proposal is to have 90 manufactured housing sites for a total of 180 units or sites. Now, this property has road frontage on Route 109A in four locations. The intent is to use two of those locations to have a singular road come in and out, so it'd be a single entrance and exit road, much like Virtual Estates by way of example. And the roads will not connect to each other. Again, they would just go in like Virtual Estates. You'd go into the development, loop around, and come out. And the other two road fringes on Route 109A would not be used at all. And you can see, again, on the plans that you have in front of you where the two roads are proposed. The topography is essentially flat. There is some wetland on it, but it's actually a very nice site. You can envision driving along 109A from Winnebaski Lumber sort of out to the Abenaki Skier here. It's very level on the road, and that topography carries in pretty much into the business district and then behind it as well. The intent is to have this project, both the multifamily dwellings, as well as the manufactured housing units, set off the road, sort of in the woods and not be visible. Not that we don't want you to see them, because we believe they'll be fairly attractive, but it'd be much like Taylor Community, or Virtual Estates, or Sugar Hill, where you'd see the entrance road go in, but you wouldn't see buildings in particular, given the distance off the road that they would be set. As I mentioned, the property is located in two different zones. The first zone is the Pine Hill Development District, and that's where the multifamily dwellings are proposed. That's a 47-acre track, and that would be subdivided into two lots, with Building 1 being on one lot, Building 2 being on the other lot. I shouldn't say subdivided, a boundary line adjustment would probably need to be done for that. Again, we already have three lots. We come in and go out with three. The residential zone has two tracks that are 21 and 24 acres, for a total of 45 acres. That would be Lot 3, on which the manufactured housing units would sit. So the idea is to have 180 reasonably priced, long-term rental units, or rental housing. And I chose those six words fairly carefully, reasonably priced, long-term rental housing. So I'll stick with my comment, but I'll clarify it. So the... We're not trying to have affordable housing here, because we don't believe we can qualify for it. We're not trying to have workforce housing, again, because we don't believe we'll qualify under the ordinance. It's just not financially feasible. We, however, do believe the project will be affordable to people that want to rent or buy, and it will provide a lot of workforce-type housing for workers in Wolfboro who are struggling to find homes, but we're not coming forward today with either affordable or workforce housing. The developer looked very hard at seeing if they could qualify, and just after spending a fair amount of time, did not feel that it was financially viable. So the 90 units in the multifamily dwellings will be all long-term rentals. We're not trying to have any short-term rentals. They would be all long-term rentals. The manufactured housing units, the 90 there, the intent is that people would own their own homes. They would rent the site underneath the home, much like they do in Virtual Estates, so they could get equity in their own homes, but they would rent the site, thus the 180 units that'll be rental housing, you know, or rental sites from that perspective. I don't think there's any dispute that we have an urgent need for housing in Wolfboro, particularly housing, particularly rental housing. There's virtually none available. Jordy provided me with a study that said in February of 2022, which was last month, there were 985 homes for sale roughly in the state of New Hampshire. Five years ago, there were 10,000. You have very few young families that are living in Wolfboro because they can't afford it, there just isn't enough housing. The school district is losing population, and if we didn't add Middleton into the district, we'd have some issues there. Maternity ward at Huggins is obviously closed, because we're just not having enough young families, often because they just can't afford to live in Wolfboro, and we believe this is a vehicle that will provide an option for people to live here. I'll also say, from Walker &amp; Varney's perspective, we have roughly a dozen people in our building, half of whom don't live in Wolfboro but would like to. We have a number of people that live in Oscepee that rent there, because they just cannot find any housing. We hired somebody last year, and they looked for two or three months. We looked for two or three months, couldn't find any place for them. I personally have one rental that I rented out last year, and I went online just to get prices for it, and I couldn't find any comparables. I think there were two properties, and the lady that ultimately rented the apartment that I had said that she looked at a house that was gone in 24 hours, and there were only two left. Mine was one and another one. There just is not a lot of rental housing, I believe, because the short-term rental market has taken over a lot of the long-term housing units. But we believe that there's a need for it. We're trying to meet that need. Now, there was another project that was denied last night before the zoning board of adjustment, and I think for a variety of legitimate reasons, and I am mindful that Suzanne Ryan's right behind me, still here, right? But the goal of the applicant, I thought, was admirable, that they were trying to provide affordable housing, workforce housing. The board obviously didn't feel that that was the appropriate site for it. And one of the big differences between that project and this one is that one, they only had about four acres, and were trying to put, I don't remember how many units, I'll just say 50, because I didn't follow it particularly, but a lot on four acres. We have 92 acres. This is one of the largest sites that's still left, that's fairly close to the downtown, you know, core area. And most of it is backland, that it's off the road. Again, it's like Sugar Hill. You drive by, you don't really even know Sugar Hill's there. You drive by the Taylor Community, you don't really even know it's there. You drive by the ledges, you can see them, but there's a lot of facilities that you can drive by, and you don't really see them, and we believe that this one will be somewhat like that, because it's set off the road. And we're hopeful that people that apply for a job at Winnebaski Lumber, when they say, geez, where do I live, that they can just point through the woods and say, you can live right there. Or you work at the SAU, you can live right there. Or our largest private employer in Wolfboro, which I believe is GI Plastique, they can say, you can live right there, you can walk to work, or if you work at Sugar Hill, or work at Abenaki Skieria. We have a lot of workers in town, a lot of people that this need hopefully will be met. And as I mentioned earlier, we don't want to spend a lot of money. The applicant has spent a fair amount of money already just getting you the plans and designs. By the way, we also have Chris Berry here with us this evening from Berry Survey and Engineering, that can answer some technical questions if the board has them. But the project, again, is not insignificant. Now, this property is owned by the Quimby family that owned Winnebaski Lumber. We're all aware that Winnebaski Lumber has been sold. The Quimby family had this roughly 100-acre piece behind them, which they thought they might expand into. They decided not to, so the property is under agreement, and will be purchased, conditioned upon getting all local and state approvals, which is why we're here tonight to see, you know, get a pulse from this board as to what you think about this project. So let me just get into some details. The Pine Hill Development District has 47 acres that this property has, on which we plan to put in two buildings. And you can see from this picture that I'm holding up, that you have in front of you, this is the building that they proposed to build. This is not a conceptual building. This building exists in Stovemont right now, another tourist community, and they're basically just taking that design and trying to pick it up and move it here. So this is a building that's being designed from scratch. It's already been built, already exists, already been successful, and again, another tourist community like Wolfboro, and that is Stovemont. The stated purpose of the Pine Hill Development District is to protect the business corridor, and we don't believe that this will in any way jeopardize or interfere with the business corridor. The buildings are already, on this side of the road, is already laden with businesses. We would just be in behind them, and again, we think that it will be helpful to these businesses, where their employees could literally walk to work if they were inclined to do so. Multifamily dwellings are permitted use in this district. And as far as density is concerned... And as far as density is concerned, you can have roughly two units per acre. And we believe we are going to be compliant, unlike the development that got approved, denied, I should say, last night. Our goal is to be compliant with the density. We're not going to ask for a variance for it. And if we can't get 90, then we can only get 88, whatever that number is. But it's our plan to be compliant with the density. We know we'll have to back out for roads and things like that, but again, the intent is to be compliant with the density.
So what would you be asking for the variance for, for more than five units in the building?
You read my mind. That's exactly where I was going. So the ordinance has a cap of five units per building. That's my belief, and one of the things that we'd like the board to shed some light on, but it's my belief that the reason we capped it at five was because the intent was that you would probably have smaller lots, a one-acre lot, or a two, or three, four, or five-acre lot. You couldn't put more than a five-unit building on there. And didn't really contemplate a 92-acre piece of property. So in theory, we could put 18 five-unit buildings on this property. Or we could do two 45. The density's the same. But we acknowledge that we will need a variance from the zoning board to go over that limit. And our pitch will be that we're compliant with the density. Do you want to make us spread out all over this property? Or compress it into one area so we can have more green area, less asphalt, and all the benefits of a cluster-type subdivision as opposed to doing it? If the zoning board is not inclined to grant that variance, then the project's dead. We understand that. But we believe that we'll be compliant with the density. And again, the pitch will be, we could do 18 units in theory, but it's just not as efficient. The more built, the more units you can put in a building, the better it is, the less materials, the less heat, less air conditioning, less electricity. It's just better all the way around. But we do understand that we would need a variance to go over that limit. We're also going to need a second variance, and that is for the height. These buildings, as you can see, are three stories, and they will be over the 35-foot requirement, not by much, but they will be over it unless we can do something creative. But we would probably need a height variance. And given the height variances that have been given for Huggins Hospital or the Good Hugh Hawkins Building, Storage Building, which is basically behind this property, you know, it's almost the abutter on the backside. My understanding of the reason we have the height variance is usually for two reasons. One, the fire issues. And number two, you don't want to block the views of neighboring properties. And this property's out in the woods, and there's nobody around it other than big buildings. Winnebago Lumber, big buildings. The SAU's got a big building. Wickers has got a building bigger than this. GI Plastique, I think, is 90,000 square feet. These are going to be around 16,000, you know, in size. So we would need a second variance for height. Those are the only two variances that we believe we would need. Otherwise, we believe we can be compliant. And Wolfboro doesn't restrict the size of buildings at all, and there's a lot of big buildings, you know, in town. The hospital, high school, Crescent Lake, Copman or Brewster, again, the boat storage building on Filterbed Road, the one on Sewell Road. Sugar Hill's got a big building. Wolfboro Inn, just to click off a few. And then the ones that abut us, that are, you know, our neighbors, they've all got some big buildings. So we think that it'll be, you know, fit into the area nicely. This building would also presume, both buildings would have to have fire suppression, given the size of them, which we think would ameliorate the issue. Obviously, I have to talk to Tom Zardi about that to make sure that he's comfortable with that. Let me transition to the residential zone. There's roughly 45 acres in the residential zone where we would put these 90 manufactured housing units. And again, the intent is to be compliant with the density on that side as well, much like Virtual Estates, you know, a road in, number of homes. We do plan on having the homes be on sites that are roughly 50 feet wide and 100 feet long, so they will be tighter. You have three restrictions which we believe we can comply with. One, the buildings can't be more than 20 feet, you know, closer than 20 feet. We plan on being 20 feet or farther away. They need to be 25 feet off the road right of way. We'd comply with that. They need to be 30 feet off the asphalt. We would comply with that. So we believe from the requirements in that zone that we would be all set. And this is also not a traditional subdivision. We're actually creating lots. We're creating sites, much like the Wolfboro Campground. You just approved some sites on that property. Same idea with a manufactured housing park. You're not traditionally going to own the land. This project is intended to be owned by one person, one owner. And even though on the manufactured housing units, people would own their own units, they wouldn't own the land under those units. But again, they could develop equity as they went forward. So let me just hit a couple of other bullet points. Your ordinance requires a 50-foot buffer, given the size of this, I believe, around the perimeter. We would comply with that. I think that the picture shows some of the mobile home units may be a little closer than 50 feet, and we clearly would have to pull them back. Again, this is a conceptual plan. We spent a fair amount of time on it, but we do understand that we'll wrap a 50-foot buffer around that whole property, and given that there's 92 acres, that will not be an issue. They also would like to put solar on the roof of these buildings, the two multifamily dwelling buildings, and perhaps a five-acre solar field. Now, the master plan suggests that Wolfboro should be 50% renewal by 2029. I see no indication that we're going to get there, but this project would go a long way to try to do that. The goal would be that it would be self-sufficient electrically. Whether that will actually work out or not, you know, we're not sure. But we'd like to put a solar field into power, both the heat and AC for these buildings, and put solar on the roof just to make it greener. They also have on both, we'll say, projects, the manufactured housing unit side and the multifamily dwelling side, a dog park, a playground, and open space areas. There's roughly 68 acres of open space. How that finally shakes out, we know that we have to have over 50% of open space, I believe, under your conservation subdivision. And the plan, again, would be to fully compliant with that. We haven't dialed that in hard, but the belief is that we can comply with that as well. And one of the nice things about the conservation subdivision, if I transition to the subdivision rigs, that they're an alternative to conventional subdivisions. We're not trying to put in one-acre lots with 150 feet of furniture and have 10 miles of roads. And a road costs roughly $700 a foot right now. 100-foot roads, $70,000. So the shorter the road, the less cost, and also more green area. So you get the benefit. The project's supposed to be environmentally sound. We believe that it will be. It's supposed to preserve open space. You can see lots of green area on this plan. Wolfboro encourages the cluster development, which we've tried to do. Our ordinance suggests that the board's supposed to be flexible and creative, and we are trying to be that way as well, flexible and creative and going forward with this. The ordinance says that we're supposed to discourage sprawl and encourage, you know, open space area. And again, this project is trying to do that, particularly with the multifamily dwellings, trying to not have 18 spread over the property, compress them into two buildings. And same with the manufactured housing park, to put 90 in a cluster area, fairly tight, again, to keep the road cost down, which makes the property more affordable. And also, by the way, keeps material costs down on the building. You know, a 2x4 is roughly $10. Sheed plywood is roughly $60, you know? And it's just expensive. And again, the more efficient we can be with our costs, the better it'll be for everybody. There is no plan to have an association. I know under the conservation subdivision, it asks, are there going to be an association? The answer's no, because this is going to be a landlord-tenant relationship, going to have one owner of the property, so there's no need for an association. And there'll be rules and regulations, much like Virtual Estates, you know, just sort of emulate that concept before they bought it out. The ordinance also provides for a 10% bonus density. And in order to qualify for that, we would need to have public space available to allow the public to come onto the property. The thought process is that if we could stick with the numbers that I have given you, we're not trying to boost that by another 10%. I suspect that when we back out roads and things like that, we're going to lose 10%. So the bonus density would probably just get us back to where the developer would like to be. But one thing that we would, a number of things we'd like input on, but one of them is if we had a walking trail go through this property, open to the public, this would connect to the Filterbed Road and would connect to a lot of the trail systems that are in the area. But we probably would have a trail that started on the Abenaki Ski Area side of the property, go right down the road, go through the project, and maybe go out onto, you know, what lead, that sort of path that leads to Filterbed Road. It's not Filterbed Road at this end because the, you know, it's stopped, but perhaps do that. And one of the questions is if we had a walking path, something like a Bridge Falls path that went through this, it was open to the public, would you deem that to be sufficient so we could get a 10% bonus? So that's a question that I posed for you. Don't need an answer the second, but one of the things that we'd like to get an answer I can also say that there is no intent to do any future subdivision. The conservation subdivision ordinance suggests, you know, what might you do with this in the future? We have zero plans to do anything. We're all in on this. One time, we would agree that we would not subdivide anything in the future. That could be restricted, trying to do this project and only this project, and not, I think, as John asked earlier, you take a lot, and you subdivide it into, and you take another one. Not trying to do that at all. This is just a one-time project. Let me go to town services. There was some discussion last night about town water and sewer. And it's our plan, and they've talked it to Dave Ford to tie into the town water system. Dave Ford is much less enthused about us tying into the sewer system, and we're not planning on tying into the sewer system. Town water's on-site, by the way. Sewer system goes by it, but the plan is not to tie into the town sewer system. Not that we would close the door permanently on that. If Dave said, oh, you could tie in 50 units or 100, we would be delighted to do that. But we're not planning on doing it. And Dave's been very clear, he doesn't think that we, the whole project absolutely could not go in. So we believe we would go forward with town water, but not town sewer. We'd have individual, you know, communal septic systems on-site. As far as traffic is concerned, these two roads will obviously pour some traffic out onto Route 109A. Nice thing it's a state highway and not a town road, so the town doesn't have to maintain it. This is not at a dangerous intersection, we believe, like 109A or the Pickering Corner. I should say 109A and 109 and 28, where they intersect near the Wright Museum there. It's not like Pickering Corner. We believe it'd be more like Virtual Estates, which I drive by every day, and there's, I don't know how many homes in there, I'll just say 100, never have an issue with traffic. You go by Taylor Community and Bay Street, never an issue with traffic. So although people will be coming and going, it won't be like the high school, which probably has the worst traffic in town, where everybody has to be at school at 7:30, and they all get out at 2:30, or whatever that exact time is. Because it's a residential development, people will come and go during the course of the day. Some people have to be at work at 5:00, some at 6:00, some at 7:00, some at 8:00, and some may not go to work at all, and some may walk to work. We don't believe that there will be a particular, although there'll be an increase in traffic, no doubt about that with 180 units. But we don't believe that it will be detrimental at all to the traffic that already exists on that road, but we raise it just as something that we have considered. So in sum, we believe that this, that there's a need, a crushing need, for long-term rentals in town and for people to own their own homes, which they could do on the manufactured housing side of this project. And we particularly are hopeful that you will be encouraged by this project, will be enthusiastically in supporting it. But if you're not, we'd like to know that, so we don't spend a lot of money and ultimately get denied at the end, all for naught, which wastes the developer's time as well as your time, and then members of the public that invariably will come to meetings. So with that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions, and I know a few others may want to say a few things as well.
Okay, yeah. How many, what locations are the wetlands on this property? I know that where the multifamily is going, there is a section of wetlands. And then the tax card refers to wetlands for the other two properties. So have you done any determination about the wetlands?
So we know, so we know there's some wetlands on the property. Obviously, we can't build in the wetlands. We'll have to be setback from them. As I stand here, I don't know the answer to that. I don't know if anyone else does here that might be better able to answer that, but there definitely is some water on the property.
Okay, could you just, before, and I see that he is up, but could you just go over how you determined the density for the multifamily and then for the manufactured zoning?
Yeah, sure. Basically, both zones permit two units an acre. And if you've got 90 acres roughly, you've got 180 units. Again, assuming no roads, and we know that we'll have to back out, you know, roads and some other things. But that's basically the two units an acre, and if we can't get 90, we can only get 89 or 88, or whatever that number is. The goal is to be compliant.
And so you're using, for the conservation subdivision, you're using the multifamily determination for the density?
Not on that side. On the multifamily, that's in the Pine Hill District.
Right.
And Pine Hill is two units an acre.
Yeah, right.
On the conservation side, which is in the residential zone, the residential zone with town water permits two units an acre as well.
Okay. Is that the case?
Well, it is in a convoluted way. The residential, this is one of the reasons, just for background, we need to coalesce all the zoning districts and put some density information in each zone. Right now, the residential zone, if you pull up just that section of the ordinance, it prescribes no density, and it says that no multifamily is allowed. However, if you then go into a section entitled multifamily dwellings, perhaps a misnomer as it is.
So he is using the multifamily?
He's using the multiplier that's in what's called multifamily, but in multifamily, it prescribes that the residential, village residential, and general residential get two units per acre. And the beginning of that very section says, where this language is more strict than other sections, the more strict language shall apply. So the multiplier itself is coming from multifamily, but only because frankly, it's mislabeled.
Could you just go over the community, the septic system, how this is going to work for the multifamily? He's getting up again.
Yeah, sure. I defer to the pro on these.
Right. So could you comment on the wetlands and then the septic system?
Absolutely.
That's, okay, thank you.
So for the record, my name is Christopher Berry. I'm one of the principal members of Berry Surveying and Engineering. I represent the applicants here this evening. So I understand you have two questions. The first is the extent of the wetlands on-site. Just for everybody's edification, the wetlands that are shown on these plans, as demonstrated this evening, are from prior plans as well as georeferenced wetlands. So this is, this does not reference or represent an on-site wetlands delineation. We hope that with the board's support, after this evening, we would then be compelled by our client to go survey the site and do a wetlands analysis on-site. With that, we would map all of the jurisdictional wetlands on-site. We would map all of the poorly, very poorly drained soils. We would be required to do a site-specific soils map, and then we would also be required by alteration of terrain to do a wildlife study. As part of all of that, we would then assign significant values to wetlands on-site and areas that drain off-site as well.
And the septic system?
I didn't know, I didn't want to carry on if there was a follow-up question, so.
All right, well, he probably should check with Conservation Commission because the open space and all of that, so that would be a good stop to make.
Understood. So with respect to septic systems and effluent disposal, we would... So with respect to septic systems and effluent disposal, we would choose site-specific areas where treated sewer flow would be discharged through a, an effluent disposal system on-site. We would break them up in ways that they would fit with the landscape, and we would ensure that that effluent has been pretreated through some sort of pretreatment system prior to being sent to the actual septic systems themselves. That way, there's a nitrogen reduction factor within the system prior to discharge. I think as Randy pointed out, we would like to keep the, an open dialogue with Mr. Ford about the potential for some of the units to hook up to municipal sewer, but again, that may come at a cost of pretreatment on our end also prior to discharging that to the sewer system.
A number of questions. I don't know whether they should be addressed to you, Mr. Berry, or whether to Randy. On the map, there are two locations where internal boundary lines are noted as to be revised.
Yes, sir.
Could you describe what that revision means?
Well, for one, the two, two lots that have the manufactured housing on it, we currently show a bright blue line that runs right through the middle of that. We would revise that boundary line so that that housing would be situated on its own lot.
Okay, so those two lots are going to be merged?
We would do a boundary line agreement and likely revise the line to swing it out. This location here.
Oh, okay.
All of this is on one, one of those lots. Additionally, as Randy may have pointed out in his presentation, there's a requirement for single buildings to be on single lots. In an effort to be compliant with that moving into the future, we would look at doing a boundary line adjustment to see if we could get the two multifamily structures on their own lot so that we may be compliant with that regulation also.
So you will be creating a lot down there?
What's that?
You will be creating a lot down in the corner?
That we would also try and do with an internal lot-line revision.
Reconfiguring, starting and ending with three.
Starting and ending with three.
So the left-hand side of the picture becomes one.
Yep.
Move the line from the middle of the left side somewhere on the right-hand lot. So you start and end with three. That also removes a lot that doesn't have any frontage.
Okay.
Answers a number of.
Okay, that works. Thank you for that. If I may, continue on. The concerns with the roadway in the manufactured housing unit, and this also, I guess, would pertain somewhat to the roadway in the two multifamily units, unit structures. Will these roads be built to town standard? Width, depth, footing?
So we haven't talked internally about town standards. I believe the Safe Plan Review Regulations and the Subdivision Regulations prescribe how roadways would be constructed, and we would, we would follow those regulations.
Okay, well, do you anticipate these roadways to be two-way or one-way?
Two-way.
Two-way, okay. Are there going to be sidewalks proposed for these roads?
We have not discussed that internally as of yet.
Okay. Once, assuming you've got a, how are these roads to be maintained in perpetuity?
So as Randy pointed out, the manufactured housing project would have one owner. He would, he or she would be responsible, or that entity would be responsible for maintaining those roadway structures or that roadway infrastructure. That would include plowing, trash pickup, et cetera. And then the multifamily housing would be treated the same way. That entity would maintain the infrastructure around those structures.
Infrastructure meaning the substructure of the road, the surfacing, the black topping, hot topping, whatever else, not just, no plowing and trash removal?
Yes, yes. The, the long-term maintenance that would come with any sort of project, yes.
Okay, and these will remain private roads and not town roads?
We haven't discussed that internally. To become a town road, I'm sure we would have to discuss turnarounds and things of that nature.
But there's no intention at this stage?
We haven't, we haven't developed that as part of this plan.
One of the conversations that's occurred is the potential for dedication of Filterbed as a future town right-of-way, so that everything in that would be built to that standard. But they would only be maintaining the surface until the town, if ever, had interest in continuing Filterbed Road through.
My concern is only that this, if this is built to, my concern is that it builds to standards that are going to last and that someone is responsible for maintaining these roads inside the subdivision in perpetuity and that they not become town roads at this stage certainly. And the tendency in town is for private roads to become town roads, which I don't particularly care for, but that seems to be the way it is, at least in the beginning. I prefer them remain private.
Our plan is to remain private.
Remain private. Okay, thank you, Jordy.
Hi, I'm Jordy Hutchinson, one of the developers, and yes, the plan would be for the roads to remain private.
Okay. If I may, two further questions. If this board were to, to ask for a, or to require a fiscal impact study of this project, how would the owners feel about that? That would involve expense, and Randy indicated in his presentation that expense was a sensitive issue, as I'm sure it is for every project.
Sure.
This one in particular. So I would be, you know, the fiscal impact study could run into some bucks.
So we, we've conducted fiscal impact analyses on projects of this size in the past. If that's something that the board would require, we'd be happy to produce one for this also.
And the same, the same would go for a construction guarantee? Would be no difficulties with that either?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chairwoman.
Other questions?
You say that this is going to be maintained in perpetuity. What is the funding source for that maintenance?
The perpetual rent that comes from housing units being occupied and rented.
So there's, the places are going to have to pay some rent, some, basically an association fee, when we call that.
So, so in the manufactured side of the project, there is a, a fee or a lease associated with the structure that's placed on the land. As Randy pointed out, the applicants would lease the land, and the owners would own the structure that sits upon the land. This is done all over the seacoast, Cielo Drive, Arbor Woods, and City of Dover. This is that exact business model, and so the developer proprietor of that subdivision maintains the roadways, maintains all of the infrastructure with that revenue source. Same would go with the multifamily structures. Revenue from that project generates the financial ability to maintain the site, just like any other multifamily housing.
I have a rhetorical question, and it probably is, maybe I shouldn't ask it. What would happen if this project was basically cut in half with the number of units which was involved? In other words, so that there were 45 apartments and 45 houses?
I don't know that we have an answer for you for that this evening. I also don't know that we can stand here and assert that we have this number of units by density right. And so I'm not so sure that talking about the total number in terms of half or quarter or full or even 150 percent is really appropriate until we finalize the engineering that's required to determine the density and then see what's appropriate for the project site.
You also have, Kathy?
I.
Okay, other questions? Go ahead, Brad.
Yeah, Kathy, has any thought at this time been put into a continuation of connecting this road to Filterbed Road? That has been a conversation in this town for years and years and years, as Jordy knows that and stuff, so. And I don't believe it's that much further down until you get to the, to the Goodview-Hawkins building there, which is from there out to Filterbed, it's pretty well-built, so.
Sure. So yes, we are open to that. I've spoken to Cameron Pratt, who owns Goodview, about that possibility. We would be open to working with the town if there was a desire at some point to connect.
You have to talk into the mic.
Oh, sorry. We would be willing to work with the town if there was a desire to connect Filterbed Road and finish it out to 109A. That would be something we'd be willing to work with you.
No, that was it.
I'm excited about the plan, actually, to tell you the truth. I think the town needs it, and I've looked at this area and these parcels of land, and when we were talking about the Filterbed Road, we were, we were talking about, you know, workforce housing, and so you talk about middle-market homes. What are middle-market homes?
I'm not so sure I'm qualified to define that term. I don't know if Randy wants to. I think the distinction, I think the distinction here is that, as Randy pointed out, affordable housing is, is challenging to do from a financial standpoint in this constant climate of economic turmoil and constant price increasing. You can't promise affordability and then constantly be dealing with the price of two-by-fours going up, and Randy pointed out that his plywood was $60. I'd like to know where he bought it, because it's $90. So we want to make the distinction that this is, this is not an affordable housing project in the conventional sense. What we often see in other municipalities where we deal with these types of projects is you can offer affordability with increased numbers. And so I think we all have a basics of understanding of how a project like this works. You have underlying costs of construction. Those are then offset by the number of units that you have. You have efficiencies in how a building is built with increased numbers. And so I think what these applicants are trying to do is provide for a density that offsets construction costs to a point that provides for a standard of housing costs that somebody could afford in Wolfborough, New Hampshire. That may be at first market rate. It also may be that as the number of housing units in Wolfborough as well as New Hampshire in general go up, those prices will be reduced over time. That's the theory, that as more housing units come online, it subsides the pressure on the housing market and things normalize. And so I think that's the position that the applicants are trying to, to work with on this particular site.
So if somebody asked me what middle-market homes are, you'd be able to tell us?
So middle-market basically refers, it's a, you know, term that refers to, you know, section of the market that does not qualify for, you know, assistance for housing, but in a lot of, you know, markets, they'd be priced out of the market, so middle income, middle-class, basically. So, and there's a big missing, especially in our area, if you were to look at the sales there, the information that we gave you regarding MLS data, in Wolfborough, the existing inventory are a couple houses in the $500,000 price range, and then stuff at 8 million and 10 million. So that's today's market.
So what about the overtime replacement? So somebody comes in, they, they lease the lot, have they?
So they own, they own their unit, they lease the lot, they enter into a long-term lease, they have the ability to buy and sell, you know, to sell their unit down the road. That's how that works.
Jordy?
Yes?
What is the manufactured unit going to look like? Two-bedroom, three-bedroom, four-bedroom?
It will most likely be two-bedroom. If we could get sewer somehow, then maybe we would go to three-bedroom, but.
One floor, two floor?
Ranch-style, one-story, much like, much like Virchill Estates, and I've, just giving an example, I have a client that just died and owns a home in Virchill Estates. We pay, I think, our office is now paying the rental bill for the client, but it's, I think, $350 or $400 a month to rent the land underneath. Their manufactured housing unit, which some people would call a trailer, but manufactured housing unit, we just had it appraised by a real estate agent for $195,000. So it's a number that starts with a one, that makes it affordable. Now, these will be brand-new. This is a used home, but still, just to give you an idea, that if anybody wants to buy a manufactured housing unit, Virchill Estates is going to come on the market in about a week or two, and we expect it'll be sold within three or four weeks. It's going to go just like that because there's just nothing available. But that's just an example of the price of what one of these is going for right now in Wolfborough.
One more question I've got, not necessarily from Randy, but we're, we're looking at the loop of the affordable manufactured houses. What are we doing for parking? Just driveways in the front or, it's really kind of tough to see on the little plan.
So, yeah, this is 150-scale plan, and then it's reduced in half, so it's, scale is a little tough on this. So each one of the proposed units has a driveway. You'd have two parking spaces available to you right at your unit's front door.
You're talking about the manufactured home.
Talking about the manufactured, yes. Yeah, that was the question.
Yeah. You just drive off the street right into your driveway.
Right, yes. And then as we develop the plan further, we would look for additional, not micro, but smaller parking areas to be placed throughout the site to allow for some guest parking as well.
Okay, because there is a, a standard for the rental properties where it's two units for each dwelling unit and then plus one visitor unit for every three units.
Understood.
Would you be able to meet that for that, that particular?
We, this is a really high-level concept plan at this point, but we, that would be our goal to meet that regulation, yes.
Okay.
John, did you finish?
No, I didn't. So this is the town of Wolfborough, Constraints to Development, and those two parcels are both in the orange, which, which notes steep slopes, both of those parcels. So I don't know if you've seen that map?
I have, yes.
Or aware of that constraint?
So those, those constraints are also site-specific, and so as we progress with land surveying work and environmental work, we would then key out those constraints on, on the site plan as we move forward. Those plans are developed using LiDAR and GIS to get a global view of where your constrained sites are, and then it's incumbent on us to take those constraints and apply them to our site.
So with those constraints, how do you plan to address stormwater around the buildings and, and off the surfaces where the houses are so close together?
So both of these projects, independently and combined, require an alteration of terrain permit, which requires us to analyze all of the stormwater that comes off the project site. We've attempted, based on concept-level review, to place low-impact development stormwater ponds in key areas to ensure that you don't have increases in flow volume or nutrient load off-site in any one direction or any one analysis point. In terms of the multifamily housing side of the project, analyzing and controlling stormwater is much easier because we could have a lot more land to deal with in that particular instance. In the terms of the manufactured housing site, we would have to do more and more true low-impact development design, so you would see integrated rain gardens, gravel wetlands integrated into the landscape on a micro level as you move down the treatment train. On that site, you'd have less availability to capture, store, and discharge.
So, so to the next question, which is storm, snow plowing and so forth. I didn't see any driveways for these, the little heads at the beginning of them. Is that what you're, is that what I'm seeing there?
Yep.
So is, is that where snow storage is going to be in each individual area?
So snow storage for the roadway would be along the, the line of the roadway, and then snow storage in front of each unit. Yes, each landowner would have space provided to them for snow storage on-site.
And, and with the new regulations, that water is supposed to be contained, cleaned, and filtered, is that what that?
Understood.
So you talk about the solar aspect there. Are you, with, are you going to use a mini-split system? Are you going to need gas or propane or any of that stuff?
The current operation is to have completely electric systems, so we'd have internal mini-splits for the larger buildings and mini-split systems for the manufactured side of the project. So yes, reliance on electricity and those types of efficiencies would be high, and that's why the applicants are looking for the ability to do a large solar field to balance out the electrical needs for both projects.
So, so to the utilities again, I'll be honest with you, the, the sewer end of it, we know that the letter that the planning board got from Dave Ford reiterated that there was no sewer capacity. reiterated that there was no sewer capacity for large-scale projects. And in order for me to sign off on this, I'd have to have him sign off on it. And we'd have to figure out whether or not it's going to be sewer or it's not going to be sewer. So that would be a key detail that I'd be interested in. And the, back to the utilities, who's going to be responsible for the utilities? If it's a lease area and you have underground utilities with the water, how's that going to work out?
Those utilities are also owned and maintained by the owner of the development.
To just, to a shut-off like the town does?
Yes. And then likely, there would either be a master meter at the beginning of the project and then internally metered, or each home would have its own individual meter.
So the large building, what makes it the need for a variance for the height? What's your, what's the dilemma?
The dilemma is pitch of the roof. So we have a three-story structure. As you go up in structures, certain roof lines are more aesthetically pleasing and work better for the solar mount that is proposed for the site. And as you go with a flatter roof, it's less visually appealing. And I think the applicants are looking to develop a nice building that has a nice roofline to it.
So it's a, I saw it there, ice guards there. So you're planting on a metal roof there?
I don't know, I don't have that specific detail.
Oh, I saw the ice guards on the eaves there, which would. Okay, okay. Any, any, any nice tree plantings planned for this community?
Yes, yeah, we would have a full landscape design for both projects.
You'll have a, I'm sorry, you'll have a lighting plan also to submit in with the application?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. Philosophical question, does the, does the putative owner, potential owner of this, these two lots, these three lots, realize that this is going to become like a full-time job? Just maintaining this site is really quite a remarkably large project that's involved here. Are they prepared? Are they prepared for this?
I don't know, Jordy, are you prepared?
We're prepared, but we've also, we've spoke with the Hodges Company and a few other management companies about managing the project.
So you're getting that under?
We would have a third-party manager operate.
Okay, that's good to hear.
And Hodges, because we're not looking to do workforce, they would be willing to take us on.
Okay, one last question. I see in the conceptual design of the exterior of the large building, and I don't see any designs for the smaller buildings, that this is going to be a steel frame building, a steel-fronted building?
Currently, they're building wood frame. So it'd be probably a wood frame building.
Wood frame building.
Depending on, you know, material prices will dictate that, but.
I was going to ask, have you looked at the, looked at our architectural design standards requirements? And are you going to be in compliance with those?
Our plan is to meet them, yes.
Thank you.
You said something which to me was impressive, that you want to have the roof angle so that it is good for solar. And so you people obviously are thinking forwardly and, well. The other thing is that in the 90-unit housing area, I think that what you're proposing is much better than someone who would be proposing a subdivision in there with 10 lots and mega homes. And this is much better for the town of Wolfboro as a whole. And so I think that the project is a huge improvement over that kind of subdivision.
Von?
My comments are not that, I think that this is a great idea and we certainly need this in town. I'm just concerned about the grade of the roads back here and the expense of building it to town standards. It's going to be a load.
So we, you know, as a gentleman pointed out, we've put some thought into this. This isn't, although as Randy pointed out, there are some nuances in your regulations that we need to adjust for. But I mean, just as an example of the level of effort that's gone into this so far, based on the LiDAR topography that we've utilized for the site, these roadways are designed around that topography. The average cut and fill is less than five feet. So the actual loop in the design is integrated right into the landscape of the existing topography. So yes, we understand that this is an undertaking, not only from a design and engineering standpoint, but also from a constructibility standpoint. But we've also reviewed that and we're prepared for that.
It's just cautionary because I know the expense of the town roads. And it looks to me, just if these topo lines are correct, that it's about an 80-foot rise. So.
Understood.
You're all set, Von?
Yeah.
I'm just curious, should you move forward with this? Do you have an idea of schedule?
Yeah, I bet I'll be asked that same question when I leave the room. So just preliminarily, this project from conception to completion, obviously, we have a few months of land surveying work and environmental work and things like that to prepare. And then likely a few months of engineering that will go into this prior to us coming back to the board.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I had one more. So the secured entrance, which is the secured entrance? It says in the pamphlet I picked, secured entrance.
To the, to coming into the project on the road?
No, it says.
Oh, oh, oh. Probably a keypad entry or something like that, so you can't get in.
Oh, not to, not to the entrance of the road?
No. You're right. On the building itself, I don't know that I mentioned this, but the unit size is intended to be one or two bedrooms. These are not three or four. You know, you mentioned 10 big houses that intend to have studio, you know, a one-bedroom apartment or a two-bedroom apartment. Again, not anything super big, but try to keep it smaller in size.
I'm just a little concerned about that because you keep seeing, you know, the mom who's single with two kids, we've got a boy and a girl. Do we still have those rulings that say an adult has to have their own bedroom and a boy has to have his own bedroom and a girl has to have her own bedroom? Are we still stuck with that?
They'd probably be better on the manufactured housing side. They have their own home.
Well, I asked that question, ones and twos.
Two, two is the standard, I think, but I'll defer.
That was my, you know.
Just as a real estate professional, the demand for three- and four-bedroom apartments is very low. You know, most of the demand is two bedrooms, one bedrooms.
Yeah.
And I don't know what the law is regarding boys and girls.
Well, it has to do with.
And that mainly applies to.
Divorce.
To actual affordable housing where it's subsidized and, you know, subject to statute, you know, rules, so.
One last question. Randy, you raised the issue of trade-off, walking paths in return for a density bonus or a 10% bonus. I don't think, I would not be willing or not be, feel comfortable agreeing to that trade-off at this point, simply because I have no idea what sort of walking path you intend or would be in part of the deal. I think that's something that you guys should talk to the planner about and make part of your application.
Part of our, what is the standard to qualify for that bonus?
I don't know if Wolfboro has had anyone ask for it yet.
Yep.
But there is a, it is possible. They offer, they offer it, right? The zoning offers it?
Going to get there in just a second.
So on a, on a side note, your sample floor plan says master bedroom, bedroom one and bedroom two, so it's three bedrooms.
Which one are you looking at, John?
The one, the handout you gave us.
Oh, sorry about that. Is that the manufactured?
The manufactured housing one?
I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, that could just be a, we just grabbed some facsimile-type floor plans, so sorry about that. And if we do get sewer, we would do three bedroom. I mean, if we don't have to dispose of all the affluent on-site, we would like to get more bedrooms, but.
But that decision is going to have to be made before you come.
No, we understand that, yeah. That's an engineer, an engineer-to-engineer kind of conversation.
So Section 175, 152, Development Requirements and Conservation subdivision, sub-paragraph F1. Public usage of open space, a maximum density bonus of 10% shall be permissible when public open space is provided to address critical recreational or conservation needs. I don't know if the town has identified, quote, "critical recreational needs" or "critical conservation needs." But it does suggest when open space is made available to the public, there can be a 10% increase. So that's what the board would be evaluating.
We did make that devaluation at the time, sure.
Yeah, it was pretty vague, I thought.
Well, it is vague, it says your offer of walking paths, which could be anything from a dirt trail to a 16-foot wide stone dust trail. You know, there's no way of telling, so I'm not going to make that kind of a trade.
I did try to equate it to the Bridge Falls path.
Well, it would be nice if that were the look and you'd probably have a very happy board if you were going to offer that, but I don't think that should be done tonight.
Yeah, I don't think he's asked.
So what would be acceptable?
He hopes for it tonight and it was good that he did. But I don't, you know, as part of the final deal.
Let's see where the density shakes out and see what needs to happen.
It's a, it is a 10% number, so it.
I mean, I would hope that you would come back once your plans get a little further developed before any type of public hearing. So that we can sort of make sure that.
So is it worthwhile for us to come back?
Well, yes, yeah, you can.
I got one excited over here, but I didn't get, I didn't get a whole bunch of it.
Oh, you got Von, Von's excited about it.
I'm not sure I would want to bankroll it.
So.
Obviously, they're holding you to it, but we don't want to spin wheels.
You talk about the Filterbed Road access area over there potentially being a public way. Is that contingent on?
No.
No?
No.
No, because they would design it to meet the public roads.
And there are other stakeholders involved. The property owned by Goodyear and Hawkins would need to be, you know, dealt with, so. We would be willing to work with you, though.
We don't know the ownership of the right-of-way on the Filterbed Road. We don't know the ownership.
And we've done, Randy has done some title research on that for us. So we do know some, we do for the most part know.
So just to get down that road, no pun intended, but if, if we were willing to dedicate that area, would that be enough public, you know, space to?
That's on the wrong property.
That's true.
Just to play bureaucrat.
But that doesn't.
Well, we could make a very narrow tube.
Let's come up with the best project and then worry about the density later.
And I think if part of the project of the two large buildings down the end of the property here, you have problems with ZBA, you have to get past them for variances before that part of the project can go forward. I would think, if I were running the show, that I would come back here once you would bond successfully to ZBA with your variances. At that point, you're further along down the line and let's have another conversation about the project. I personally am enthusiastic about it. I think it's a really good idea. I'd like to see it happen, but I think you have a couple of hoops to jump through first.
Any project this side, obviously, you've got some hoops and we're aware of that. But it looks.
Okay, can I ask a couple more questions?
Oh, please.
Okay. The net development density for subdivisions. There, you have to take out the wetlands and steep slopes in order to determine here actual density. That's in the regulations, so I just.
Which is why I was hopeful we might get the 10% to bring it back in. That's the, sort of where the math was from. But we've realized we have to back out the roads, wetlands, slopes.
The slopes and the wetlands in order to determine the density.
Correct.
Okay. The height of the building, you said, would be three stories, the rental buildings, multifamily? Somebody just said it was going to be three stories.
Yes, the multifamily.
Okay, will there be elevators? Okay.
I think that's required actually for building that size. I believe it's required for building that size.
Yeah, okay.
I think that if you're over 5,000 square feet, you need to.
So you've taken into account the ADU, I mean, the fact that you need to make accommodations? Okay, all right. Inclusionary zoning, I think that it would be really good if you could take another look at that and see if there's any way you can, you know, come up with some affordable units. I mean, it's in our regulations, it's been there.
I believe they have and they concluded that it was just not financially feasible. Sure.
My name's Michelle Hansen. We did look at it extensively, that was our first goal.
Okay.
Was to do workforce, but the numbers just don't work. Like, they do not work. The, we met with Edie Damaris, we met with Jim Menahane of the state a few times. He did a full pro forma for us for both a 145 unit and the 90 units. And at the end of the day, you lose money, quite frankly. Because you have to, in Carroll County, the average mean income, the average median, median income is quite low.
Right.
So for a one-bedroom, we couldn't charge more than $960. And that would include all utilities. So taking that out, it's really not much money. So we did try, but it just wasn't feasible.
Okay, all right, I just think it's important to keep that in mind, that you don't have an answer for it.
Side note, would that change if the density bonuses were increased above where they currently are allowed in the regulations?
It really comes down to the building costs versus the HUD rental rates for this county. If we were in Rochester, New Hampshire, we'd be all set. Carroll County, New Hampshire, you're not seeing any of that workforce housing being built because the numbers don't work. And the group that applied to the ZBA had not actually done a pro forma. So even if they had gotten their approvals, I don't think their project would have penciled out the other.
I think it's impressive that you guys did that pro forma already and brought it to an end in passing as opposed to making a big deal about it.
Yeah, well, we met with Jim and then we met with him again by Zoom. He ran the whole, all the numbers, we tried. And after talking to Edie and letting her know that we probably couldn't do it, she said the reason that they were able to do it with Harriman Hill came down to lots of grants that they were eligible for as a nonprofit and the years that they spent with volunteers just to get the process done. Were it not for that, their project would not have penciled in. So we tried, or we have tried.
Okay, the other, other issue is the 50-foot setback. And Randy, I think you did speak to that, that some of these units will be pulled back so that they're not.
Yeah, they have to be. We understand that there will be a 50-foot buffer around the entire perimeter. I believe that's required and the intent is to do that. Always a good idea anyway, as a matter of practice, just to.
Okay, and can you take a look at the traffic study that we may or may not need?
Yeah, hopefully will not, but it's not an insignificant project. But again, you've got Burchill Estates comes out on a town highway on a single entrance road and that creates no issues. Taylor Community on Bay Street, in my opinion, creates no issues.
But usually, a bigger project doesn't require that.
Well, it's sort of broken in half, though. You know, it's a 90 and 90 with two different entrances.
Probably a good way to look at it would be to actually focus on the net density and then approach DOT to see what driveway permit would be required or what they would require for the driveway permit. And then if all of a sudden they've required two entrances, two exits, and a turning lane down the middle for the first 150 feet, it might become cost-effective to do the traffic study to prove them wrong.
We would, we would develop a traffic study.
Great, speak into the.
We would develop a traffic study that we would submit to you and DOT for review. We likely wouldn't do that in-house. This is likely a larger project that we would hire a PTOE for, somebody that specializes in traffic, to submit that information to you. But we anticipate that.
Oh, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, the only reason I'm bringing these things up is because you said you wanted to know everything.
And there's an asterisk at the end of this, it says there might be more coming.
That there's likely more coming, yeah, yeah.
So as part of that traffic aspect, would you, would you look into how many accidents are in front of Burchill? are in front of Rochelle?
Yes. So, every traffic analysis that we would do of this size, we would look at, DOT doesn't currently have their own trips calculated for this area, so we would do an actual on-the-ground study. We've started to conduct a trip-end analysis to determine how many trips are coming and going from each one of these sites, and then we would look at an accident report at similar or like projects for that very reason.
The, the only other concern that I have is the density. I'm still not convinced that the density for the manufactured home part of the project is, it needs to be explained better.
So, well, and, and we're happy, once we conduct the work that we need to conduct, we'd be happy to provide that information to you.
Okay, and...
One of the observations I have, and I am no expert in, and I don't want an answer now, but there is a large amount of open space in this. And from my point of view, the precision of the survey in that large open space would not have to be the precision in the other areas of this project.
Understood.
And I, you may, there may be issues, there may be legal issues, but that would be just one thing that you should look into.
Mm-hmm.
Isn't that where the community septic system would be, in, in the open space?
Those areas would be keyed out, and yes, outside of the developed areas, that's where those systems would be. So, there would be a more intense survey in those areas.
And you would need state approval for that?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, okay.
Multiple.
Okay, and the setback coverage and height for the manufactured home, is that clearly spelled out in our regulations? Okay. And we would need coverage, which you may not need, but still, we would need that. All right, anybody else have a...
Yeah, with the boundary line adjustments that you're considering, have you thought about whether or not the shape of the lots would be in compliance after the adjustments?
We haven't put much thought into that specific aspect of it, just because we haven't really chosen where those lines would be. But it would need, those lots would need to either be, stay in conformance, or be less, less non-conforming.
Very good, thank you.
Yep.
This is probably your first rodeo.
I just have a stupid question. If you're over in the manufactured housing spot and you have your little lot, are people going to be able to take care of their own yard at all, plant things? You're going to have it like that, not strictly walk past and let somebody else move on?
Good. Okay, so the alteration of terrain, you're going to get that into the state, and then driveway, as you go out onto 109A, that won't require state approval?
Yes, ma'am.
So, we'll be hearing from you again.
Say again?
We'll be hearing from you again pre-application phase.
I, I think it would be prudent for us to do a design review.
Yeah.
Yes.
Once we gather a lot of information, we can do a design review.
Yeah, you can hear the concerns the board has.
Sure.
Well, and given what Randy said at the beginning, yes, right.
To follow up on your question, Kathy, you were concerned about the density on the manufactured housing side. Is your concern that we can't have two units per acre, or is your concern that after we back out wetlands and steep slopes, we may not have enough?
Well, I guess I'm a little concerned about the, using the multifamily definition for the manufactured homes. I mean, I, I...
I don't think we were there.
It's not a multifamily definition.
It's not, not very, I mean, we're supposed to be following what our regulations say, and that seems to be more for...
I believe that the section is 175, 79, which is on page 187 of your ordinance, that I believe the density in the residential zone is two units per acre. That's my, my read of it.
Which section is it?
Yeah, it's half an acre for each additional acre, and if we have roughly 45 acres, then you could get two per acre.
Okay, the, where that, I mean, this is probably not something that needs to be on TV. That does fall apart a bit, because right underneath that, it says you could have a single-family, an ADU, or a duplex. It does not say that you could have multifamily.
And we're not looking for multifamily.
I know, but it doesn't say you can have single-family ad infinitum.
I'll just show you what we're...
But they have it in front of them.
Yeah, right. Okay.
So, what he's showing are his 175, 79, which, again, I believe says you can have two units per acre, and we, now, we discussed that pretty thoroughly, Tavis, before you, didn't we?
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Jody just explained it to...
It's creative use of the ordinance.
All right, so that's, you're okay with the, with that as a concept for two acres, two units per acre on that side? On both sides? Just different sections of the ordinance.
Is everybody all, you who, is everyone all set? Because the next time we see this, it's going to be well along...
I've said it three times.
But it'll still be pre-application phase.
Yes, right.
It'll be still conceptual, closer to reality.
So, based on what, at least our reading of the dimensional controls for the residential district, the minimum lot area is one acre, and each additional dwelling unit requires one-half an acre per unit. So, that means that we would be entitled to up to four units on two acres, or 90 units on 45 acres.
You mean if you have an accessory dwelling?
Well, that's not what it says. It doesn't say that. I mean, we're, I'm just, we're looking at the dimensional controls for the residential district.
Okay.
And Tavis may be able to add to that.
Yes, Tavis will have to add something to that.
You're going to add something? All right, well...
When it comes back, there will be a complete explanation of how they achieve the density.
That section that he just read seems to say that, you know, for one acre, you get one dwelling unit, for another, half an acre, you get another dwelling. So, but that's not multiplying at times two.
It's not what?
Well, maybe that, yeah, I say, okay.
Microphone.
Yeah, okay, all right. Okay, anybody else have anything? Okay, thank you very much, folks.
Thank you for spending the time you did.
Yeah, right.
All right.
Okay, all right. Okay, folks, we're going on to the accessory dwelling unit discussion. It's nine o'clock, so let's keep that in mind. Go ahead, Tavis, accessory dwelling unit?
Okay, the board, last meeting, asked for some language in case of wanting to contemplate allowing detached accessory dwelling units. So, all that you have in front of you in a draft form is the addition of a new paragraph D, which states that all ADUs that are within or attached via conditioned space to an existing family home are permitted by right and subject to the conditions outlined in F below. The old D became E, so a detached accessory dwelling would then need a conditional use permit by this board. I modified criteria for approval to standard conditions of approval, which are what the board has been applying in the conditional use permit phase. Maximum of one accessory dwelling unit per single-family is permitted, exterior alterations, et cetera, 30% total habitable or 750 square feet. What I did add in there was number six, either the single-family home nor the accessory dwelling unit shall be used for short-term occupancy, similar to that of a hotel or motel. And then if you flip the page over on the back, I have some suggested, this, this is not comprehensive by any stretch, but if people are interested in raising the bar for a detached ADU, suggested conditions at this point are the ADU must be located behind, or not forward, or in the same plane of the front facade of the single-family home. And the accessory dwelling unit must be architecturally compatible with the single-family home, including siding, roofing materials, similar fenestration, et cetera. This, again, ironically similar to the newspaper notice requirement. This is language you asked for, and this is a conceptual draft.
Well, some, some members did, yes.
The, the board said, whether it was two or seven, so...
Yeah, right.
If you want further work on this, let me know. If you have comments on this, let me know. If you have concerns or want me to throw it away, I'm here at your pleasure.
My, my comments on this are that if we're seriously trying to increase the number of houses available to people in town, this would be a good way to do so. If you had a detached unit, like the old-fashioned, you know, help, help quarters or guest house that was smaller than the house, at least it's under supervision by an owner of the bigger house. So, I think that that's a nice way to have it integrated into the land plan, as opposed to set aside somewhere in the woods.
I, I would think that we would just take the accessory dwelling unit and try, try to get people to go along with that being attached to the house. I mean, we've had such a difficult time with all of the accessory buildings turning into dwelling units. I, I can't imagine that we want to really go ahead with this. But, I, I mean, it's up to the board, but that's, that's my feeling.
Well, I, I would agree with Vaughn. I think that experience has shown that accessory dwelling units attached have not been a rip-roaring, fire-burning way of getting additional housing into the town. I think what we've had, a couple of applications, I mean, how many do you remember seeing coming across the table? It's clearly not all that popular. I think that one of the reasons is that if it's attached to your house, it's kind of like you having a personal relationship with the person who's in that attached ADU. If you have a detached ADU, with the conditions that Tavis has suggested that be imposed, you now have an opportunity for people who own their homes to build or to convert a garage legally into a detached accessory dwelling unit, which could be used for additional housing in the town.
I guess one of the questions I had in, in working on this at all, I understand that the town has long strived to prevent bathrooms, or prevent bedrooms, or prevent anything going in an accessory building, for fear it would turn into something, is that because the town has been adamantly opposed to having a second living structure, or because it was, quote, "illegal to have one," and anything that was added to a structure that would blend itself to an illegal conversion should be thwarted? I, I don't, I guess I don't understand the fear. I, I do understand the rationale that, well, a detached accessory dwelling unit is tantamount to a second single-family home on the property. Not really, if it has to be a third of the size or 750 square feet, whichever is greater. I tried to include the, the condition about behind the front facade. It's, it's minimizing it, it's putting it off to the side or to the rear, so it's subordinate to the single-family home. I think that would encourage people to, or visually what that does is not show two houses side by side on the lot. I mean, we could get into how far behind it has to get, but that...
Well, it has to beat the 750 square foot, I would think.
No, how far behind the front facade of the existing...
Yeah, well, I'm just saying for the size, so it's not going to be a huge building.
No, it won't be a huge building, and it'll be, it'll be in conjunction with the architecture of the existing structure, and it'll be behind it, so it won't be really intrusive on the front appearance of the building. But it, it sort of recognizes the fact that people are doing this illegally anyway, makes it legal anyway, regulates it through the conditional use permit, and clearly, our current ADU ordinance has not worked the way it was originally designed, because no one's taking advantage of it.
Okay, well, it could be because of the fact that they have to come to the planning board. That could be one deterrent.
Well, the planning board, when we set up our ADU regulation, we were really concerned that if we allowed ADUs, we would have all sorts of random construction going on with no regulation, and we wouldn't know whether the person by taking the ADU was related or attached to the person building, and we required residential proof, and on and on and on. Yeah, it was maybe chilling, but we, we felt at the time it was important to protect the town.
I have a feeling that some of the legislative bills that are currently circulating are based on the same. I think the state legislature required ADUs to spawn additional housing. It didn't take off the way they thought. That's why now, three years later, there's contemplating allowing four accessory dwelling units. So, I think it would be a bold step in a way for the little town of Wolfboro to allow detached. Wolfboro is not the only town that allows detached accessory dwelling units by any stretch, but allowing it would be one more piece of evidence that our local representatives could use to stymie the current legislative acts that are moving forward.
Also, some, a lot of the older lake cottages, we'll say, had accessory dwelling units. I mean, I know of one that was a carriage house with a bedroom and a bathroom in it, which had a horse, a stall, and somebody's sleeping quarters, you know? And they were not unusual. It was even usual to have little cottages for other members of the family.
Or even a bunkhouse.
Yeah.
We don't allow those anymore.
Well, we outlawed bunkhouses, and that's where this all started.
I'm just saying it's prohibited.
Right, I'm saying what they, what they used to be. There used to be little, little things.
Before, before, a long time ago, there used to be these little houses around.
And I, I get they're prohibited, but are they bad?
Well, they were prohibited because we didn't want them to interfere with what we wanted the character of the town to be. Single dwelling on a single lot, you know, nice white, clabbered house, New England style, blah, blah, blah.
Every 150 feet with a white picket fence.
Well, the problem is that, you know, the house I live in used to be a boarding house.
Was it?
Yeah, I've got, anyway, it used to be, and, and that would have probably been illegal today. So, the change, times change, and we're facing a housing crisis. I'd like to propose that...
No, 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 I, I'd, I'd like to agree with Kathy on this one. I think, as our history goes, I think you can read into the history, and the reason that you just said, Mike, we like the single-family home. If we didn't like the single-family home, we would just chop the lots up into smaller pieces and just allow everybody to build closer and tighter together, and everybody would just be on top of each other. This way, at least adds a little space and a little balance to each and all the lots out there. I don't, I don't agree and would not support a detached accessory dwelling.
I was going to propose that, that the board asked Tavis to take this text, clean it up so it reads nice and easy and straight. Let's have another reading of it, and then, and ask for public input if necessary.
Right.
See how the public feels about it.
I mean, that's what my concern is, is, and I know we've got the section in here about shall not be used for short-term occupancy, but how, how would we enforce that?
You can't. That's the problem we've got now, you can't.
How, how would you enforce?
By regulating, you know, by regulating that...
But that's what is going in here.
You can say it, but you can't.
That's what's going in. I mean, however long the short term is.
It doesn't, because it's in there, it doesn't mean it's going to be enforceable. to be enforceable, and it doesn't also mean it's going to be defensible at law. So, but it puts, as with every law, laws are ordinarily obeyed by law-abiding people, and that's 99% of us. It's only a small number that don't agree. Someone seeing this is going to say, yep, can't use it for short term, and they're going to abide by it, because most people do.
If you look at it the other way, if you have the avenue, regardless of detached, condition number six could be added. That's very simple. Whether, if you get rid of detached and just simply make accessory dwelling units permitted by right and add the condition that they not be used for short-term similar to a hotel or motel, that at least requires somebody to come in and pick up the building permit to create the ADU and agree to the conditions. And then if you see said property being used or advertised as a short-term rental, you agree to this, we have the right to now regulate it. It actually becomes a way to track short-term rentals or the absence thereof, a system we do not have in any form right now in town.
In one particular universe.
Can we add language about something like a six-month turnover limit or something?
With the things that are in the legislature right now, I'm not going to suggest 66 months, 90 days, 181 days, 183 days. There's legislature out there proposed right now that would prevent towns from regulating short-term at all.
Yeah, that's going to die.
Your lips to God's ears, that's what they said about ADUs, so.
What's dead?
Well, it's not dead, but whatever I read is not favorable to that legislation.
Bradley's 249?
Yeah.
I thought Bradley's 249 was almost a shoo-in at this stage. He's got really, really strong support in the House.
Nobody thought the state would require ADUs be allowed in every zone.
Right, and they went ahead and they did. I.
I guess my question to the board, and I'm not advocating for detached accessory dwelling units or not. If you had an application come in tonight looking at best case, probably not, but best case, 180 units, workforce and affordable doesn't work. You can't, through regular subdivision channels, require someone to subdivide and/or build affordable or workforce housing. If we're limited by water and sewer from increasing density to allow smaller units in areas that we have water and sewer, and people are not going to be able to be required to do workforce or affordable housing, what then does the planning board suggest as an option to create workforce or affordable housing? If the board believes it needs to do anything beyond, as was suggested at the zoning board last night, oh, we have an inclusionary zone, so we've complied with state law.
Well, my thought was detached accessory dwelling units was one way of meeting that need for additional housing.
I don't know what else you can do, really.
You know, and I like Mike's suggestion of, you know, converting a garage you're not using, converting your barn.
Yeah.
You know, these things that, you know, prices are going up and our income is not, so we're having to rethink. I mean, a couple of years ago, I thought real hard about how do I freaking do this to my house? Well, there's no place to put anything on my house. There's no way for me to make another bump out anywhere to make an ADU attached. But jeez, if something like this was done, oh yeah, I could put the cottage in the backyard. That would work, you know? The little housekeeper cottage, that would work.
This would bring into the tent activities that are currently being conducted outside the tent.
It also never becomes.
In other words, legal or not.
It never becomes two lots. It's always one lot.
It remains one lot, and the owner can do with it whatever he wants.
Okay, so this is being proposed, that we would take out the conditional approval if it's attached, but have it in there if it's not attached.
That's up to the board. That was the way that.
Well, I'm asking you, isn't that what your proposal is? Yes, it is.
Can I answer?
Yep.
That's what's written here. This is a halfway step. I don't think there's anything magic about coming to the planning board to have someone agree to conditions that could simply become regulations.
Okay, but you have.
That's the way it's written, yes. I'm just as happy to say accessory dwelling units permitted by right, whether attached or detached, subject to the conditions below, and all of them would apply.
We currently.
It's up to the board whether you want to have a conditional use permit or not.
Currently, Kathy, we have conditional uses required for an attached ADU.
Right.
And I wonder, are they chilling? Is that one of the reasons why we've seen virtually no ADU applications?
Well, if we put it in that we take it out of the attached and put it in the detached, that at least would give me some comfort.
That's exactly how it's written here.
I think that's what this is. Yeah. But he just was arguing with himself. No, I don't think he was.
Tavis argues with himself all the time, it's all right.
No, I don't? Yes, I do, no.
What you have here is.
It could simply be done by regulation. You could simply have an ADU regulation that allows attached or detached, and if you have detached, you have two more conditions or three more conditions than if it's attached. This was a soft sidestep to a community that was unwilling to allow ADUs by right from the get-go and shift that conditional use permit observation, oversight, if you will, by the planning board for the detached.
Okay, when this was adopted, the planning board felt very strongly that it be attached. And that's why I'm bringing this forward, because that was the feeling of the planning board at the time. If the planning board wants to change, that's good. But the other thing that has come up is these short-term rentals, and, you know, I'm not sure that we can address that.
We can't address that, but we can at least put the applicants for a detached ADU on notice that they are not to be used for short-term rentals. That gives us a leg up when in an argument, if it turns out that somebody has done that, they're in violation of this ordinance, and there's consequences to be paid for that. And that's also a defense, should we have to go to court over an issue because we put the guy on notice. Remember, to your initial point, when ADUs were first proposed to the planning board, the planning board was adamantly against them, period. And then all of a sudden, the state comes along and says, tough, you've got to do it, but we'll allow you to make some regulations. And we scrambled, and we made our regulations because we really had no choice. We were desperately afraid that by putting in ADUs, because the state forced us to do so, the character of the town would change. And as the years have gone by, we found maybe one or two ADU applications. The character of the town certainly hasn't changed. So I submit.
Well, again, the reason I'm bringing it up is just to remind people of some of the things that have been brought to our attention.
Okay, then I'm reminding as well the history of the problem that we faced with ADUs, and that our worries never came to anything.
No, I think, but if you did detach them, then you would have large expansion. You have water, you have all that stuff that falls into the play. Again, I just don't get why we think that there's a loud voice out there that says we need to detach a dwelling and have two dwellings on the same lot.
There isn't a loud voice, John. What there is a loud voice is, where can I live? I can't find a place to live in Wolfboro. It's too expensive, and there's no housing anyway. And the planning board's response to that could include detached ADUs as a partial remedy to that issue.
So I hate to use Tavis's words against him, but when we talked about the short-term rentals, even he said, how do we know it's not a wedding party? How do we know if it's not a graduation party? I mean, we couldn't decipher what an ADU tenant was compared to any other tenant that was just an ordinary event. So having that in there is really, by his own discussion, you can't decipher it. It's difficult to enforce.
Yeah, it's impossible to enforce. It's like every statement, you can't do a short-term.
Well, it's less impossible to enforce than just adopting a blanket regulation that says short-term rental is not allowed and then trying to find it. If you apply for a building permit under a set of regulations where you have to agree to conditions, the town has the ability to revoke the certificate of occupancy for the inviolate unit. You still have to prove it's in violation, but there is a much cleaner mechanism to remedy that violation.
But then if Senate Bill 249 becomes law, then this little clause becomes moot.
If that becomes moot, then all of us can thankfully stop talking about short-term rentals, and the market will do what it does.
Completely agreed. I mean, this, as I said before, paragraph six, section F, is only going to be observed by those who ordinarily would observe rules and regulations. And luckily, in the world, that's most of us.
I guess I would disagree with that statement entirely, completely, in the fact that the neighbors next door, if it is a perennial problem, are going to speak up. It is not going to be something which is, you know, which is caught on the first or second offense. It's going to be something that is over a period of time, this is going on and on, and then there's going to be reaction. So I think that your statement that it's never going to be caught, or whatever, it's, you know.
I didn't say that.
I thought that that's sort of what you're saying. Anyway, but my point is that it's something that is, you know, if there's one infraction, it's not a problem. If it's a perennial infraction, then it becomes a problem.
My point is only this. Most people pay their taxes. None of us like to do it, but we all pay our taxes for one reason or another, but we do it because it's required. Most people are law-abiding, or we would live in anarchy.
And if the perception is that people that are going to break the law are going to do it anyway, why not put a provision in that allows them to do it so the people that are in them are safe?
Right, bring it into the tent.
There is that. It would have to all be up to code, wouldn't it?
Yeah. So, Mike, to your point, last week, the Town of Freedom voted to regulate short-term rentals, and a couple of the things that they're going to do, they're going to have a 90-day rental limit per calendar year. And if you're going to register with the town to be able to do that, you also have to show New Hampshire DES septic approval for the number of bedrooms that are in there. And all that sounds great for the law-abiding citizens, but I just question how they're going to enforce it.
Right.
Well, it all sounds really wonderful, and Wolfboro could do something quite similar. In fact, we could prohibit them, period, and then we're simply going to get trumped by state law, because that's the way the state is moving.
No, no, my point, though, is that even if it's not trumped by state law, how do you prove that somebody is doing a short-term rental?
Well, the same observation could be made for any application before the planning board, when we say blah, 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 condition 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. It's at times difficult to be sure that conditions 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 are indeed being met if they're working the ground or activities out in the field.
But in those instances, those are inherently tied to the building permits that manifest from them in whatever form, so there is a remedy to those. It's much different than saying, short-term is no longer allowed.
No, agreed, good. I'm just saying, most regulations are adhered to by those who are regulated.
Sure.
So, in practicality, what's the big hang-up if it's attached and it doesn't provide workforce housing if it's attached? I'm just trying to, I don't, I just.
It hasn't worked. It's not a problem. If you, when we did attached ADUs, it was only under duress because the state said we had to. There was no expectation, there was a certain degree of fear, but they certainly haven't worked to the solution of the housing problem or workforce housing, because we've only had a couple of applications for an ADU come before this board. People are just not using them.
So if it's one foot away from the regular house, or if it's attached to the house, don't you see the same cause?
No, I don't, because I'm.
If it's one foot detached, it makes it a panacea?
No, it doesn't make it a panacea. It makes an experiment that you haven't run yet. I mean, the experiment that we, we have experiment A attached, and it's not working. No one's using them. So we have another option, experiment B. Let's run it and see if it works.
It does take away the sound of somebody flushing when they're not in your apartment.
Kyle screaming.
It does take away the feeling that somebody's in your house. Remember, some of these ADUs are literally closing a door to part of a house.
Yeah.
The state did no one any favors with their definition of an accessory dwelling unit. In fact, I would say of the four accessory dwelling units I'm aware of, if you look at it right now, it is a member of the family living in said accessory dwelling unit. Mom made space for the kids to move because the kids wanted to live in Wolfboro, didn't have another choice, but mom wanted her own kitchen, she wanted her own living space. Technically, they meet the definition of an ADU, because the state said, once you have independent living in two spots, it becomes an ADU, whether that was your intent or not.
Why don't we go back to what Mike's suggestion was? Refine this, however.
You mean, take the cross-out language out?
Yeah, take out all that stuff.
And then after that, then we'll have a public hearing. I think that would be probably the best way to deal with it, find out how people feel.
That's fine.
Yep.
Okay, all right. Okay.
I do have one technical question, though.
Okay, so the next.
Julie had a question.
One question before we turn the page for Tavis. If I put the guest house in the backyard, running water to it, does it go through my house before it goes to the guest house?
Up to you.
Or could it get a new line run with it?
Do you want to meter them separately? Are you on town water? Are you going to want to pay a separate connection fee? Do you want a separate water meter, or do you want the same meter? All of those questions, that's not a simple answer. There are some in town, again, most of them are within the same residential structure, and they're not metered separately. So people are charging rent based on some proportion of the utilities. Other people are having separate electric meters put on the building and separate water services, whether it be a separate well, et cetera. Some are sharing septics with state approval. Some are putting in independent facilities, depending on how big the units are.
Okay.
Okay, can we, can we skip over the inclusionary zoning? Do that next.
Absolutely.
Yes, please.
Okay, and go to the minutes.
I have just a couple of concerns.
Yes, I do, too. So go ahead.
Oh, you want me to go first?
Yeah.
All right, on page four, section Water Memo, last line, Jim said he would set something up when he returns. My question is, has anything happened?
From vacation.
My question is, what has happened? Has anything happened? Has Jim set something up? Is he, has he returned and has he set something up?
Yeah, it needs to say from vacation.
Okay, so he has returned from vacation, but nothing has been set up. Could we ask the planner to ask Jim to set something up?
Sure.
And then my other question on 2022 Work Program Housing Updates, Mike suggested, or asked, is it practical to craft an ordinance, and could we talk to council about that? The question is, is any progress happened on that?
Bottom line there.
Housing updates, Mike is asking.
Is it practical to craft an ordinance about short-term?
What, an ordinance says, has Laura been contacted? Has she said anything further about this?
Not directly, and she's out right now, but I'll have an answer for you at your next meeting.
Okay, thank you. So I have.
Okay, I do have a couple. Under Pop Whalen, 1, 2, 3, Kathy asked about the protection from silt fence, and Paul said a silt stocking would be used. Is that correct?
First page.
That is correct.
Okay, so a silt stocking is, okay.
Not a silt stocking.
Yeah, and the only thing that I was wondering on these minutes is, I mean, I can understand that Jennifer probably doesn't want to put in the last names of everybody, but it would be good, I think, especially on the people presenting to us, if they were defined a little better, I think, rather than just Paul, Jim.
Yeah, why doesn't she use last names instead of first names? So that in 20 years' time, when someone comes to read these minutes.
Well, so usually the first sentence says who is presenting.
Correct.
So you can figure out who Paul is.
So under A, Pop Whalen, Randy Tatro, Jim Pinio, Paul Blanc, and then after that, it's first names.
Yeah. Okay, well, then it goes down Kathy, Kathy Vaughn, Mike Hodder.
Right, on the top of the page.
How come he got his last name in there?
I think it's special.
Because I'm special.
Everybody knows Kathy.
It needs to be consistent.
When I used to take minutes, the names, names would be, you know, planning board members would be listed up at the top, and then when projects were opened, and then it would be first initial last name.
Okay, and.
I'll just work with her on getting a convention.
Yeah, okay.
Could we correct it because I was present, because I commented, and I'm not on the list?
Hang on, cross-reference.
Okay, under the, the Work Program Housing Updates, she mentions Jeb's bills. That should be Jeb Bradley.
Member, member.
You're in between your names.
I'm the one.
All right, Joel Phoan, what's your question?
My name is just missing from Members Present.
Oh, you should be in there?
Yes.
Okay, do you have that?
Yeah, I got it.
Okay, on the.
President, that's just.
The, the last page, February 1st, 2022, I, I think she's, I've got to remember to put the motion in the second and then the vote. She didn't put the vote in, is what, what happened. All in favor, that's all I got to say.
Kathy, I have one also.
Okay.
On the first page, right underneath where it says Staff Present, says Brad Harriman recused himself, that should really be moved down to right underneath number two, underneath of Pop Whalen.
Yes, right.
It was just that discussion there that I.
Yeah, right, okay. Anything else?
And then you returned for Taylor, correct?
Right.
So we need to put Brad Harriman returning.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
Motion approved and amended.
Okay, motion has been made. I'll second, and second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed. Okay.
I guess I should have seen adjourned.
So moved.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
That accessory dwelling unit, it seems like there's a mix of apples and oranges. Accessory dwelling unit for new build could be in-law apartment attached. Accessory dwelling units that I think of where I came from was if you had, like I had a cobler's shop and a barn, not attached, but the cobler's shop now has been turned into an accessory dwelling unit. It was a small little building and it turned out perfectly. So I think, I think it behooves the board to think of it in two different terms. One, for the pre-existing little buildings that are around the property, have those be accessory, and the other one, new build, have it be in-law apartment. The other thing is, I think the reason that it was thought of, that people were afraid of it, was because they didn't know what was going to be turned into around the lakes, because the lakes have a lot of cottages that have outbuildings, and, but the, the outbuildings are ideal for accessory units. They're ideal.
Okay, and, and, but they're not allowed, the accessory apartments are not allowed in the shorefront.
They're not allowed what?
In the shorefront district.
So then.
I don't know if that would hold up ever.
Then that would be, that would be perfectly fine, but you could have an accessory building that's there that was a, a guest house, or it was a bunkhouse, and if they wanted to convert that because it's accessory building, that could be a little unit as a, as a in-law detached. But I haven't seen what you've written.
Thank you, and I'm sorry I forgot the public comments again. I got looking at the clock thing.
I know.
Oh my God, 9:30.
Well, well, that's in there. The other thing in your packet is just a clean version. Zoning Board got this last night as well, so you have a clean version of what the language is.
Okay, and, someone do you want to make a motion to adjourn?
Kathy, one, just one other quick announcement, just to let somebody know real quickly. On the 23rd, Board of Selectmen has invited our state reps and Jeb Bradley to come in and discuss House Bill 249, the short-term rentals. It's going to, will be at our meeting on Wednesday, the 23rd, so if anybody's interested.
All right, very good. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great.